To start the recording. I will now call to order the Gig Harbor City Council meeting of Monday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. The time is five thirty-one P M. I will do a roll call from my far left, Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Storset is excused this evening. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lichten.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
And Councilmember Barber.
Here.
Okay, great. Uh, if you would all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin this council meeting, we would like to recognize that we are gathered on not only the ancestral and traditional lands of the Skobopch Band of the P'alup Tribe of Indians, but also on the site of one of the largest and longest standing historic villages of their people, the original inhabitants of the Gig Harbor area. Um, council, are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, do I, um. Oh, we will move straight. Sorry, I'm getting used to our new agenda format. So we have moved public comment on the consent agenda items and any items not on the agenda above the consent agenda before it's approved. So anyone wishing to speak in the audience this evening that's here in person and also welcome to anyone watching online. Um, if you would like to speak, you can come forward. Um, if it's on an item on the consent agenda or not a business item. Um, if you are here with a group of people and you're all speaking on the same thing, you can have one person speak for you and that person will have five minutes. Or you can each come up and speak individually and you'll have three minutes. So is there anyone wishing to speak on behalf of a group tonight? Okay. And all those that are having this gentleman speak for you, will you please raise your hand?
They might not do that.
What's that?
We're, we're, we're all, we all been talking. We're all here and we all have some different opinions, so we want you to hear it and then.
Then I'll have you all speak individually.
Great, great. So my name's Mike Shipman. I've spoke to you before. I live up on the hill in the Finn Home District.
Can you say your home address? Thank you for the record.
Ninety, I gotta remember that. I'm mature. Uh, ninety-five, twelve, Woodworth Avenue, up on the hill.
Okay.
Uh, I used to live on sixty-fourth. So I'm very aware of the, uh, proposed, never been proposed roundabout on sixty-fourth and Hunt. Um, but I've tried to get up and down that road for years and I would certainly love to see a roundabout there. I'd like to see traffic slowed down. I'd also like to see a roundabout at Gateway and I want to thank you all for the vision. And even, um, up against some obstacles for you to put the roundabout down at the bottom of Stent. So don't we all love him going around? Isn't that a great ride around that roundabout? I love it. And it's safe and I think it's a good way to navigate without having to wait. So thank you for that, but basically I'm here for the larger reason. From what I understand is City of Gig Harbor is gonna, um, finally replace the water line. Now, I'm one of the recipients of the water from twenty years ago. And they talked about replacing the water line twenty years ago. Politics, goodness. Um, which may not know is most of the people that live in the Shore Acres Water District are paying the city of Gig Harbor one and a half times the water rate for the rights to have a drink of water. But they also own a two acre spot of property around the corner of Reed Road and sixty-fourth. And twenty, thirty years ago, Shore Acres tried to negotiate to give the city or trade the city for the right to pay just the normal rate for that property. And we're needing affordable housing. Why don't we, um, why don't we work with those people and see if we can generate some funding? Cause I see that's on your list this year. Um, and probably break that into lots, build some affordable condominium housing and solve three problems with one little deal, right? So, but my biggest reason why I'm here tonight is I understand you're gonna rip up the road next summer, potentially put in a great new water line. I would like to ask you to think bigger than that. When I come into the city of Gig Harbor, what's the first thing I see? The beautiful Puget Sound and then I come into the city and I get downtown. But I'm looking at power lines, I'm looking at high speed, people running down that road, up and down that road. I don't see any park benches there. I don't see nice standards of streetlights. And so I think there's a bigger opportunity here and that opportunity is to look at the big picture of Soundview, the gateway to the city, right? And say, what could we actually do other than an operational thing like replace a thirty-year-old water line that we've been talking about for thirty plus years? Let's look at the bigger picture. What if we could do some things that would really improve the overall project? And cover a lot of the items that you got on your strategy. So I'd ask you to do that. And I think that there is that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as you come forward, just a reminder to state your full name and home address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Dick Keen, spelled K U E H N, sixty-three, twenty-eight, Island View Terrace, Gig Harbor. Okay, this will be the second time around for me. Uh, we were here, there, we've been at the same house for forty-three years now. Okay, so we were here when the first road was repaved and, and it was a nightmare actually going through that at the time. But what a difference it made when you finished. So we wound up with a good product at the end. And so now when you put it in the water system, I tell you where we live right now, we, we're excited about that. Seriously, we are excited to have you folks stepping up and taking care of our water systems. That's really a good thing. So why am I here? My concern is, is that, uh, the projects, the two projects, as I understand it, one project is gonna come in and it's gonna, uh, put the water line in. And, and then a year later, another project is gonna come through and it's gonna resurface the road. And, and Mike, is that, is that a fair statement? Is that what's gonna happen here with this project? Does anybody know?
We can answer questions after.
Okay, okay, good. Uh, so that's my concern is that, uh, that for two years, we're gonna be putting up with, uh, corner up roads in there. Any other concern is, um, a lot of traffic comes down that road right now when there's, uh, problems on Highway sixteen, which is frequently, particularly in the evening, people dive off at the end of the bridge on Reed Road and they'll also come turn off on, to get on the Soundview and head down Soundview. If Soundview is closed for an extended period of time, where are those people gonna go? They're gonna stay on sixteen, sixteen is gonna be jammed up even worse than it is right now. And so all this is gonna make our, our life as residents that live right along, uh, Soundview, uh, just much more difficult. So please take into consideration that, uh, if you can do anything to scrunch those projects together to shorten up the time, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda or not on the agenda? Hello?
Hello.
If you please state your full name and address for the record.
Jennifer Day, forty-seven oh-two Dunbar Drive Northwest.
A little closer to the mic.
Am I talking okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Don't want to talk too close. Um, right, thanks.
Okay.
Literally, it says, I'm Jennifer Day and I'm an introvert. I hate microphones. So to be standing here in front of you is terrifying but necessary. Um, I had something written out, but I've decided with the help of my cohort, Cassie, um, that I'm going to read an email that I sent out yesterday um, to a group of people who have touched my heart. In, here, here they come.
Regarding.
Regarding Pride in the Park, which we just had on Saturday at Scancy. I said, my dearest Cassie, Alyssa, Carol, Ethan, Lisa, Soraya, Leah, Claudia, John, Brenda, Jenny, Mary, Julie, Madeline, and Liv. I went back to the very first email that I sent to Josh at the city asking if there were any pride events happening in Gig Harbor. On April seventeenth, the journey began. I'm not going to lie, the past sixty-eight days have been intense. I did not know which way was up when I was diagnosed with diabetes on April twenty-seventh. And I was unsure if I could do justice in creating an event for the local LGBTQ plus community. But after witnessing the miracle day today, that was Pride in the Park. I know in my heart that it was all worth it, meeting each of you and working side by side. It's been an absolute honor and a pleasure. I felt like I was having an anxiety attack so many times today. But then I realized my heart and soul were so open that I was taking on the gorgeous rainbow energy for the hundreds of guests at the park. And I was overwhelmed with positive vibes and joy. I wanted to share my gratitude before I take a very long nap. I am beyond honored to have created Pride in the Park and to plant the seeds of change, inclusivity, and joy with each and every one of you. I thank you for bringing love to Scancy and I look forward to two thousand and twenty-four. And I just wanted to say thank you very much. It was an absolutely magical day and I'm still riding the high, so I'm, I don't know when I'll come down, but thank you very much, each of you.
Thank you so much. Oh, is my mic there it is? Good evening. You state your full name and home address for the record, please.
Stanley Cook, uh, six-three-two-nine Island View Terrace, Gig Harbor. Uh, I'm going back to the tip program. We live right on, uh, wife, my wife and I live right on the corner of, uh, Soundview and, uh, Hunt. Uh, we live, our back warehouse faces Soundview, uh, used to be the antique store across the street where the place, where the house was all the flags and the stuff on the deck, if you ever drive up that way. Anyway, uh, uh, on the program number seventeen is, uh, addresses our corner.
Mayor, this is for.
Here.
Oh, excuse me, just one moment, sir.
Um, if this is on the tip for new business item one, then that would need to wait until the public hearing is opened.
Yeah, are you speaking on new business item one, the public hearing on adopting the trans, the trap, um, the transportation improvement program? Or is this, are you?
Well, addressing the same program that, uh, Mr. Keen and the other gentleman were doing, the Soundview.
Well, they were talking about a project, a specific project.
Well, I think the first guy talked about a roundabout going in at that particular place and which is a.
Uh, well, what, oh, so where would you like this public comment to be city clerk? What would be appropriate?
It, it sounds like his intent is just to comment on the one project.
Not, not the entire tip, just the one project?
Just the one item, number seventeen.
Okay.
I think it's fine to have.
So you think that's, okay, so that's okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that. We just wanted to make sure that we were doing everything correctly.
You're taking my time up.
We stopped the timer for.
No, I've got, I've got to be very quick here. Uh, my concern is, is I'm not in love with roundabout as much as, uh, our last gentleman was up here. But anyway, uh, this would greatly affect my property and this type of thing. As I read in the, the tip, uh, number seventeen, it says they're looking at a mechanical signal going in there. If that changes, will I get some kind of notification of what's going on there? Cause it really does affect my property, uh, cause we're right on the very corner. Uh, anyway, I don't know if there's a, an issue that changes the proposal on seventeen. But, uh, if there is, I'd like to know about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak this evening? Okay.
Mayor, if I could also remind council members to turn off their microphones when they're not speaking.
Yes.
Good evening. My name's Robert Wenskill, thirty-seven oh-two Hunt Street, number forty-six. I'm part of the Harborview, um, Harborland, my, um, I guess we'd call it a park. Right next door to us is the, uh, Peninsula Baptist property, which is in the process of selling. It's, uh, three and a half acres of, uh, timber and trees with a beautiful trail that goes all the way through it. I understand that you guys have gotten, uh, notice about that. I feel like I'm a little bit late because that is gonna close tonight and, uh, we may be too late to do it. But I just like the city to consider perhaps even going from here because it's a beautiful place for a park. It's already got an existing trail. The maintenance would be very little to the city, which is unusual. And, uh, I just think it would be a real gem to the city. Hopefully I'm not too late to operate on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And if you would please state your full name and home address for the record.
I'm Christine Johnston and I live at thirty-seven oh-two Hunt Street, uh, Gig Harbor at the Mobile Home Park. I'm in thirty-seven, so we're across the street there. And I'm the one that sent the email in about, um, about the, the piece of property, um, being, you know, looked at for development. And so, um, after that time, I've done a few little things. I went in there and I got, uh, I took a bunch of pictures of how the trails are really well maintained and the, all the fauna and there's a couple nests in there that way high up, like we think it's maybe owl nests cause we can hear owls. But then I, I used, um, uh, Mer- Merlin, a bird app, and the, on the morning of the twenty-sixth, there was seventeen different birds that came up on the app that are flying in and out and all around, and then plus the owls, but we don't hear them right now. Um, the other, the other issue is, is that, um, there's no parks that are more on the side of thirty-eight, your little trails, you know, that we can walk on? Because of course this would be right next door to us to walk, walk, um, across the, I mean, through there to get to the, um, to the trails. And it's, it's about, well, when I walked it, it was about six or seven thousand steps cause I could check it with my, uh, uh, watch. And so, you know, that we can get a nice little exercise or walk our animals or kids or do a lot of things there. But I wanted to share some of the pictures and I'm not sure, um, how, if, how you'd like to see them.
Um, you can have them, um, you have them to Councilmember Wood and we can pass them down and then give them back to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanna make sure that, would like to see them.
Sure.
It stays as a little trail and the church has done an excellent job of, of keeping the trails and there's, um, Bob has built a bench and there's another bench in there. And so we don't want to go against the church. We just want to keep the, uh, the trails and the property as a nature reserve kind of thing, a gem in Gig Harbor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Okay, come on forward. And you can move the mic down to you. And if you'd state your name and a home address for the record.
You betcha. I'm, I'm Pamela Rusick. And I also live in, uh, Harborland Mobile Home Park, thirty-seven oh-two Hunt Street. And I'm number ten. So first of all, I just wanna say to everybody who represents Gig Harbor, we are so unbelievably blessed to have such a wonderful fire department and police department that saved us. I think we all feel that way. I, I just wanted to put that out and I, I'm, we were, um, only evacuated for a couple hours. It could have been so much worse. So very grateful. So I'm also speaking about this piece of property that's on the south side of Harborland Mobile Home Park. That's been there since sixty-seven. Um, I've been walking my kids and my dogs through that park since the eighties. It's got several beautiful, um, trails through it. There's, you can, you can walk on a short trail, you can walk on a long trail. And anybody doesn't know this piece of property, um, on the west is Thirty-Eighth Avenue. This property is on the south and then the church. And we're on the, uh, we're on the north, church is on the east. Um, so, um, besides the birds that, um, Mrs. Johnston has, um, captured on our app, Merlin, in case anybody wants to know, it's wonderful. You just hold it up and it captures the bird song, tells you what bird it is. And you can also have it, uh, show you pictures of the bird. So, um, we saw a lot, like she said, we saw lots of nests in there and of course, and there were some great big ones. There are many owls and eagles in this property adjacent to it. I've had conversations with the owls and the eagles are over all the time. So we didn't know how to identify those nests, but, uh, we know that they're there. So, and on, on, um, the other side, on the south side too, there, past the property, it's neighborhood after neighborhood as it is on the west side with beautiful neighborhoods. And this is really the only place where there's, it's all wooded. There aren't, there's a beautiful greenbelt before the neighborhood start again. And, and, uh, there's plenty of parking along the street. And it's adjacent to, it's within walking distance, cause I've walked it with my little kids, my big kids. So it's, it's abs, like, like Mrs. Johnson said, it's an absolute gem here. I propose it be called Heart of the Harbor. And, um, so we just lost a huge piece of green land property across to the west of us when, um, when the rush development went in. And I'm not against development. Come from a family of developers, I understand it, but I think this is a chance that we have to maintain a little bit of what really makes Gig Harbor absolutely special and beautiful. And I don't know where these animals are gonna go if those trees go away because of all the trees that we lost on the other side. So, um, I just hope that people get a chance to go and walk the property and we'd love to walk it with you if you'd like to see it. So.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak tonight? Okay, uh, we'll ask our online audience. If there is anyone that wishes to speak on a consent agenda item or an item not on the business item portion of the agenda, you can press the star nine button at the, uh, on your phone or the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment for this portion of the meeting. And I will ask council if there is a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I think microphones are going in and out. I think Councilmember Lichten was, uh, second. And seeing no lights, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion carries, six, zero. Thank you, council. Uh, moving on to the mayor's report, I was, uh, happy to be in Spokane this last week from Tuesday to Friday at our Association of Washington Cities Conference. Um, these conferences are really tiring, to be honest, but, but great for networking and meeting other mayors and other city administrators and council members and, um, A W C staff that I've only seen on Zoom for the last two years. So it was nice to meet a lot of people that I really had only seen from here to here. And it was nice to see them in person and network and hear about what other cities are doing and honor what cities are doing. Um, I think there were a hundred and thirty out of the two hundred and eighty, two hundred and eighty-one cities in the state, uh, that were represented there. And so that was wonderful. Um, so thank you for bearing with me as I was not, um, returning emails and phone calls in a timely manner. And I'm still catching up from last week. Um, I also wanted to thank our police officers. There were at least five who were present at the brush fire yesterday. They were the first on the scene. They started evacuations right away. Um, Officer Allen and Officer Sam, um, started with the two homes that were there and then the church. And, um, they don't get to kick indoors very often, but they did yesterday and they were, and I was just so proud of how quickly they responded. Um, the one person that was in one of the homes did not know there was a fire going on, so they saved her. And, um, there was no one in the church, thank goodness. But if you saw any of the pictures on social media, you would see that that fire, those trees right behind the church, behind the house were completely engulfed and the fire came straight up to the boundary of the, the church building. And so I'm just so grateful for, there were three other officers that were there, Officer Hicks. Um, and I think Officer Dougal and one other, I think Officer Dougal, but you're not there? Okay, there were, there were five total and I apologize, I left my notes upstairs, but it'll be in my top five this week because I really want to honor, um, their work. And, you know, we don't have this happen very often in our town. And so, um, thanking the Gig Harbor, uh, Fire Medic One for their amazing work in saving all of the structures, um, not one structure burned. Um, there were some playground equipment that was melted and so the church will have to replace that. But I'm just so grateful and proud of our, uh, police department and our fire department. And I stopped by to see them. They were very tired, but they were having a little, uh, dinner break and then they were going back out to keep watering things to make sure it was gonna be safe for the evening. So just super, super grateful and, and proud of our fire department and our police department. Um, and then also, um, I was able to go down to the pride event for about forty-five minutes or so on Saturday toward, toward the end, um, of the event. And I just wanna say thank you also to our fire department, to the Seattle's finest officers that were there, to the Pierce County Sheriff Cadets that were there, to you, to all of those who organized this event. Um, it was very loving and kind and fun and, um, everything I was hoping that it would be. So thank you for putting on such a great event. I'm sure council will have comments at the end during, uh, council comments. But from me to you, I really wanted to thank you for such a wonderful, uh, event that was just, I could tell it was very emotional for a lot of people and that made me very emotional as well. And, uh, it was just, um, great. So thank you so much. Thank you so much. Uh, I will turn it over now to Katrina Knudsen, our city administrator for her report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Um, couple of updates for you tonight. At your last meeting, you requested that staff work on a flag policy for displaying, um, flags on the dais and potentially outside. And I'm pleased to announce to the public that we did talk about that at your last work session. We have made some adjustments to that, uh, ordinance coming forward. We'll be bringing that back on the fourteenth of July for council to have further discussion. Um, as we have, uh, looked into some of your questions and we'll provide those answers. And then that will, um, come from work session into a public forum where the public will be able to comment on that as well. So we're looking at doing that this summer. Kudos, um, and thanks to Josh Stecker for taking that on so quickly, um, and bringing that forward. Secondly, um, as you may have noticed in the gigabyte that went out last week, we are now including weekly updates from our departments in, uh, the gigabyte as well as on our website. So what this does is lets the public see into the departments on what we are, um, accomplishing in each of the departments on a bi-weekly basis. And, um, that is new for us. This has been provided to the council now for about a year. And they found it very helpful as well as our internal staff. So we're happy to share that with the public and give you kind of a, a better view inside of the city operations and what we're working on, um, week to week. So that will be again included in the gigabyte each week on our website as well as in the council packet for every Monday meeting. So we're hoping that you will take a look at that and enjoy that. Um, wanted to quickly mention, since it is the twenty-sixth of June, that fireworks are prohibited within the city limits of Gig Harbor. Um, we are working at, uh, ways to get that information out to the public, um, still. I was able to find out from our public works director today that we unfortunately are not able to utilize the V M S boards. He's just the messenger, but it's a federal regulation on that. So, um, we're looking at other ways to get that information out to the public. Uh, let's see, on the tenth of July, from five to five-thirty prior to your next council meeting, we will be hosting a reception for Sergeant Dougal and Officer Allen as they are retiring from service in the Gig Harbor Police Department. We hope that, um, council and the public will come and, uh, join us in celebrating two officers that have served Gig Harbor for a very long time, keeping us safe. Um, show them some appreciation for their service. Um, just a quick update, since there were folks here talking about the Peninsula Baptist property, I have been in contact with their real estate agent to see what they're selling that for, just to get some general information. Um, they have, uh, four offers on the property currently, two that are cash offers, then the price is escalating. But I'm hoping to get that information, at least be able to provide that to council tomorrow, just so that you'll have that information if there's any way that you'd like to direct staff. Also, we have been in contact with the Gig Harbor Land and Conservation Fund to see if there's, um, any way that they would like to participate or purchase that property. So wanted to provide that update to council that we have, we are looking into that, since especially there's people here this evening for that. Yeah. Um, and lastly, um, staff recommends that we re, uh, reappoint the LTAC chair for the remainder of two thousand and twenty-three. Um, in, in order to have a council member sit on that body due to the timing of meetings. Uh, currently, Councilmember Storset sits on that, um, committee. But we were, we are seeking a reappointment of that just for this temporary time between the end of July through December. We do note that Councilmember Barber was interested at this, in this appointment at the retreat. But if there is a recommendation, uh, from council, then that now would be an acceptable time to make that.
Yes, so I will ask for, uh, any official nominations from council for, uh, replacement LTAC. Chair, a council member, Luke.
Yes, I move to nominate a councilwoman Barber for this position.
Okay, Sarah, second.
Second.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay. All those in favor of Councilmember Barber becoming Chair of LTAC Committee? Please signify by turning your lights on or raising your hand. Okay. Great. We have a consensus.
Thank you very much, counsel and mayor for that. And Councilmember Barber, Josh will be in touch with you about meeting materials. And we'll make sure that counsel is up to date on all things LTAC moving forward with the application from the chamber to take over destination marketing organizational duties. So that will be coming forward to you in July or August.
Great.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And I forgot one key component. I did not ask Councilmember Barber if she was willing to accept the nomination. Yeah. I mean, you still can, because that was my bad. Okay, thank you. I will not do that again in the future. My apologies, counsel. It's been a long week and weekend. I know, it's only Monday. It feels like like a Friday. Okay, thank you so much, counsel. Thank you, Councilmember Barber, for doing that. That is wonderful. And I will now move to our first business item, which is a public hearing on resolution twelve eighty three, adopting the twenty twenty four, twenty through twenty twenty nine Six Year Transportation Improvement Plan, otherwise known as the TIP. We are suggesting that this be approved on first reading, and so the suggested motion is move to approve resolution twelve eighty three. This will be this public hearing comment period will be the only comment period. So if you have something that you would like to say regarding this item, you can do so during public comment when we open the public hearing. So I will turn it over for our report from our city engineer, Aaron Holst. Welcome, Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. See if I can share my screen here. All right, tonight before you use the proposed twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine tip in accordance with R C W, local agencies must annually prepare and adopt a comprehensive transportation program for the ensuing six calendar years that's consistent with the agency's transportation comprehensive plan. This is commonly referred to as the Six Year Transportation Improvement Program or otherwise the TIP, and is required to be submitted annually to the State Secretary of Transportation. The basis for this twenty twenty four tip is the previous year's tip, the twenty eighteen Comprehensive Plan and the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget. Including your council packet tonight is a copy of the SEPA addendum that was processed for the tip. The tip map is also included as part of your packets. This map identifies that we're looking at right now. There's some more to it that I can scroll down if necessary, but this map identifies all of the tip projects for the twenty four to twenty twenty nine cycle. There's also a report this part of your packet, and that report is in a format acceptable to the state and includes very detailed analysis of each tip project. The analysis of the projects, excuse me, analysis projects, which year each phase of the tip projects is expected to take place while also describing the funding. The report details whether the funds are planned or secured and speaks to whether the funds are projected to be local, federal grants, state grants, or a combination of funding sources. Changes from last year's tip are identified in red on the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four tip comparison spreadsheet that's provided also as part of your council packets. The only change from the proposed twenty twenty four tip are as follows. The only project that is new and was added to this was the Prentice Avenue Fenimore Half With Roadway Improvements. That's project number ten. And that was added due to the project being funded in this budget cycle. There are a few other somewhat minor changes, just minor shifting of project numbers due to some being budgeted and and so those changes are incorporated into this as well. With that, I'd like to briefly review what was gone over previously at the council study session in May. And let me see if I can zoom into this a bit. And this is mostly for the benefit of the public, just because I know counsel, you've all heard this already, so I might kind of quickly just go through it, but this is a document we put together called What is the Six Year Transportation Improvement Program or TIP? And it's a list, it's the city's near term project list for transportation projects that are projected to happen over the next six years. It's a planning document that we Engineering Public Works updates annually in June. It's adopted via resolution by council. It's a requirement of the R C W and it's a useful tool for us in public works when applying for state or federal grant applications. It's a document in the form of the map and a report which we're looking at here. And for the R C W, a new project can only be added to the tip if that project's identified in our previously adopted transportation comprehensive plan. So all the projects that you're seeing on this tip list were part of the twenty eighteen comp plan update. Also, a couple of notes here, it's typical for a project on this high on the tip list have the following characteristics. So a project that's been budgeted by city council or another example would be a project that received federal or state grants. A typical project that's low on the tip list, for example, twenty five through twenty eight, that project may not yet be budgeted by council, and we haven't applied for federal grants for that project yet. One last document I'd like to quickly go over here is just the progression of a transportation project. We put together this little flow chart and it's kind of a nice visual depiction of where a transportation project usually starts. So as you work from the left to the right, the transportation element is kind of where the real, a project is kind of built and there's some real in-depth analysis done to formulate some of these projects. So we're now, as you know, going through a new comp plan update. So this comp plan update, when we're we're looking at updating the transportation element and the A T P in particular is a great place for, we're looking for really detailed input from both council and the public on transportation projects. So that's where it all starts. And that kind of leads to the six year tip on this flow chart. And yeah, I think we've kind of talked that one through, but it's a near term planning document that identifies a list of planned transportation projects over the next six years. And from there, it goes to the city budget process and as you know, that's where projects make make its way into the particular funding cycle for any given year's budget. And from there, as you see come to council meetings quite often, are the word of design and construction contracts for projects and yeah, all of these are points where both council and public have the opportunity for input. So yeah, that's all I had prepared for tonight. So thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Clarifying questions from counsel, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. That was a good presentation. We've got a lot of neat stuff on our list here. It's pretty extensive. Had a couple of small questions on priority number two, that's the metering roundabout at Burnham interchange study. Was I mistaken? But I thought we don't need that anymore? Or did I, was that another? Was that another project that about two meetings ago, I think maybe even Public Works Director said we may not need that anymore because of how well the the current roundabouts been working?
Yeah, so it is that project, I think you that you bring up and we are, we have a consultant working on that right now. So we took new traffic counts in the fall of last year and definitely saw that post COVID, a lot of the traffic patterns, our local traffic patterns change. So the project, the problem we were seeing was some really heavy traffic coming down Borgan, approaching that roundabout isn't there anymore. So we haven't finalized that traffic memo with our consultant yet, but it sure does look like that project can eventually fall off the tip and we would propose that that would happen next year when the the study is finalized.
Okay, thanks. That helps.
I can come back to you.
Okay.
Councilmember Luke.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions for you. Are these priorities, as I lose, as I look at the individual lists, they they're identified as priority numbers? Are they priorities?
So we, as Public Works Engineering, don't utilize this as a priority list. It's kind of guidance for us when we're going through some of these processes that we're talking about here. As you did notice that on the Wash dot form, they do refer to these as priority priority numbers. But we don't utilize the tip as an exact priority project list.
So so I think we need to make that really clear to our community, because I know the folks in Gig Harbor North are really happy to see Peacock Hill at number eight. And I think that really needs to be made aware of them that this is not really a priority. Is that my understanding that correctly?
Well, it is, it is number eight on the tip list because that particular project is budgeted for design in this budget cycle.
Okay, that's great. So it looks like it will stay there then, right?
Correct.
Thank you. I I like to see the Prentice Avenue School, which is number nine. I like to see the Prentice Avenue School, which is number ten, move up to number nine before the Crishman Trail because it's a safety thing for the school kids. Is there any possibility, where are we with the budgeting and design on that project? Can we move that up one?
Yeah, I mean, we're definitely progressing through design on that one. And Jeff and I and Katrina have taken a look at some of the funding sources on that and shifted things around. So it works out. But if we wanted to change the project numbering, do we need counsel concurrence for that? Or yeah, I think we would need counsel concurrence to kind of shift the project numbering at this point from from ten to nine.
So do I need to make a motion to that or? So then I move that we
We would need to do the public hearing first, but
Oh, sorry.
Subsequent to that.
Okay, then I have one last question, and I know that we're going to be doing some Donkey Creek and Burnham opening up. I don't see anything on here. I would assume that when we open up Donkey Creek, when we daylight it, that there would be some road transportation issues on there. Am I wrong about that?
Yeah, and there will be some inherent roadway improvements as part of that project, but it's mostly a covert project, so we haven't gone to the level of putting it on the tip for now.
Okay, thanks very much.
To Councilmember Luke, your, the question about where are we with Prentice Fenimore, on this Thursday's work session, the Public Works Director will be talking with counsel about funding options because we did not receive a federal grant for that. And so we, as Aaron mentioned, we've worked out the entire street capital budget for the two years. And we're going to be proposing that to counsel on Thursday. And that will include to the application of two T I B grants for state funding for certain projects. So we'll be, and essentially we'll have more in-depth discussion about that on Thursday.
So then is this not a good time to?
This would be the appropriate time for the tip motion, if you'd like to do that tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rothenberg.
Yes, I really appreciated the public comment on the tip plan. But I wanted to assure you and Aaron, please correct me if I'm wrong, it's not a priority list. Maybe items one through five or something that's already got funding, already has some engineering and planning done. That's priority. But your item nineteen, I've actually seen items fall off of this list. So and assure you that there's plenty of time for public comment when we get close to those projects being done. And if you're living in the neighborhood, you will get notified of that. Example would be the loss of the grant for for the Fenimore, Prentice Fenimore. We thought that was going to move forward with federal grant and it last minute it fell through. So it moves back down the list. So it it's kind of like the first step in the guidance for planning. It's not nearly the last step at all. So you'll get plenty of time to to hear what's going on in your neighborhood.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. One comment, one question. I know that we're actually, I'm pretty proud the city's put in as many roundabouts as we have, and I hope and I think we heard tonight support for more roundabouts where applicable. Some places we clearly can't put them in just from grade issues, but that would be something I would like to see focused on in this. And then my only other question comment is that project number, hold on, seventeen, that was also brought up. That's particularly gnarly intersection. We can't put a roundabout there. That's got huge grade issues, but I'm hoping that we will get a consultant that can come up with some interesting ways of working that intersection. I think if we just drop a signal in there, I think we're going to have problems. That's a high speed. I mean, unfortunately, people go down that street pretty darn fast and T boating somebody at forty miles an hour is not a good thing. So hopefully we can think of some calming, traffic calming before you get to the stoplight, because I think that may be the only option, but hopefully it won't be just a traditional stoplight and then let people kind of make their way through there, because that's a scary intersection. I actually drive that a lot now. It's fast. I almost got hit the other day from not there, but just up the street. People aren't looking, that's bad. So anyway, thank you for the update and good work.
Thanks.
Any other questions from counsel? Okay. Seeing none, I will open up the public hearing on this item. And if you are in the audience and wish to speak, you can come forward at this time and you'll, if you could state your full name and home address for the record. Okay, I don't see anyone. I will open it to our online audience. If you would like to speak on this agenda item, you can press star nine on your phone or the raise hand button at the bottom of your zoom screen. And I can't see hands. Josh, can you see if there's anybody up there? Nobody's over there. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open it up for counsel deliberation. Councilmember Luke.
Thank you. So I guess now is the time that I can make it. I would move then to move the, I move to direct staff to move map ID number ten, Prentice Avenue Fenimore Street Half With Road Improvements up to number nine on the map ID.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilmember Barber. Any other comments from counsel? Councilmember Rothenberg.
Mayor, if I could just clarify real quick, I believe the motion on the table is to approve the resolution with the amendment moving number ten to number nine. Is that, is that correct understanding? Okay.
Okay, does counsel understand the second and the motion? Okay. So that's what's on the table. So discussion on the amended motion. Councilmember, I saw Rothenberg, your light was on. Okay.
I don't really see the need to change those numbers because we've already stated that it's not a priority list. Both of those projects are going to progress at their own rate of speed, some of it ahead of the others and just the number is moved, I think.
Okay, thank you.
So I would not vote for the amendment.
Mayor, if I could also clarify that the main motion is to pass an amended resolution. So if a council wants to consider an amendment other than what council member would propose, they would need to amend Councilmember Luke's motion. So Councilmember Rothenberg in his instance would pass would motion an amendment to pass the resolution without any modifications? If that's his intent.
Then I'd like to amend Councilmember Luke's motion to approve the proposal with her amendment. I'd like to move that we approve the proposal without the amendment.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Seconded by Henderson. Okay, so the motion. I had to make sure we're discussing the right motion. So motion on the table is the amended motion to pass resolution twelve eighty three as it currently stands with no changes. So we have a motion and a second. It's our discussion on that. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. I guess my comment, and maybe I could direct this staff. If it was moved from ten to nine, what does that mean? I mean, if it's been repeatedly said that it's not a priority list, so it's not like seems to me that funding would be an issue where where we get the funding, where we are in the design phase. seems to me that funding would be an issue where, where we get the funding, where we are in the design phase. Um, so the difference between moving it from 10 to nine, maybe staff could say, yeah, we'll, we'll work on this before something else. But if you're not going to, then what's the sense of moving it? Because they're not priorities. At least that's what we've heard.
Yeah, it, it doesn't make any difference for us. They're both um, projects that are partial, at least partially budgeted and for the design uh, phase of the project.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Barber.
Yes, thank you. Um, it does not make a difference in the priority, but um, part of the reason that I seconded Councilmember Wook's motion is I think that there is an appearance that we are caring more for our stu-, our children and their safety as they're going to school by moving that up a pri-, a item on the tip list. And that is why I'm in favor of making the motion. I want to prioritize the safety of our schoolchildren.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wook.
Yeah, uh, yes, thank you. And, and thank you, Councilmember Barber. That's exactly why I brought it up and because we all know that the folks in that neighborhood and the parents who take their kids to that school and would like to see this. I think a number may not mean much to you, but it does mean something. It is a statement of safety for these kids, and that's why I, I made the motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilmember Rothenberg, you had, or Martin, you have not spoken yet. I'll call on you.
Thank you. So question would be, and I appreciate both Councilmember Barber and Wook's um, desire to make sure that our children is as safe as they can be there. Do you have a rough estimate on when that project would start and what completion? I mean, we looking at three years, four years? I don't have the information up in front of me. Just to get a better understanding of what this looks like for us.
So the, the Prentice Fentimore project you're asking about, yeah, we're going through design and hoping to wrap up design this year and uh, fingers crossed go into construction next year.
Okay, and funding has, has been allocated for it or not?
Yes, we uh, shifted some funding around due to the loss of a federal grant like uh, City Administrator Knutson mentioned earlier. And so um, we will be discussing that at a council study session this week and in more detail.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Uh, Councilmember Lichten.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, quick question. How much staff time would you anticipate that it would take to change, move one position such as um, Councilmember Wook? Um, I appreciate her bringing it up, wanting to show support for the school area. I'm just concerned about how much staff time, like if this is a big project, if you have to resubmit for grants, all that type of thing.
To make that minor change, about half an hour or less.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Rothenberg.
I think the residents of that area are fully aware of our support of the children's safety. Three years ago, uh, that was going to be a $400,000 project. And as we moved forward, turned out to be close to a two and a half million dollar project, Zach, close to. And because of all the things involved, so those people were fully aware where we put our safety. I think to do something like this for appearances is a, a unnecessary.
Okay, great. Okay, so the current motion on the table is to keep, uh, is to pass resolution 1289 with no changes. Is that what we vote on first? Okay. So I'm going to do a roll call vote because I'm needing to make sure I'm clear on all of these. Um, so all those in favor of passing resolution 1283 with no changes, please say aye. Councilmember Wook?
Nay.
Okay, Councilmember Rothenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lichten? Nay. Councilmember Henderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Barber?
Nay.
Okay, we have a three-three vote. Does that mean I'm the tiebreaker?
I, I was going to say I can change my vote if I can.
Does Councilmember Lichten wish to change her vote?
Yeah, it's, I, I'm fine either way, so I will say um, yea.
Okay. So motion passes to pass resolution 1283 as is current with no changes.
So that, that was the motion to amend, so we need to vote one more time on the actual main motion now.
Okay.
It'll essentially be the same as what we just voted on.
Yes, I was wondering if we had to do that again. Okay, so we've voted. Is there a motion to approve resolution 1283?
I move to approve resolution 1283.
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Martin. Okay, roll call vote again. All those in favor say aye. Councilmember Wook?
Nay.
Councilmember Rothenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lichten?
Aye.
Councilmember Henderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Barber?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes five to one. Okay. Thank you, Aaron, for your report and for answering all those questions. Appreciate that. Thank you, staff, for the guidance on the amendments. Appreciate that. Moving on to business item two, uh, this is resolution 1281. Amending the wastewater comprehensive plan by revising the sewer collection basin number 14, discharge location into basin 21. Suggested motion is moved to approve resolution 1281. And this report will be from our Public Works Director, Jeff Langham. Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I'm going to share my screen just to give an overview of uh, where we're talking about and what we're talking about. That didn't work, did it? Let's try again. There, that's better. Okay, so um, we're a little zoomed in here, but you probably see where we are. This is uh, near the intersection of uh, 72nd and Scansy and Wagner Way on the west side of Gig Harbor, west side of 16. Uh, the city received a request from Rush Development Company for a technical amendment to the city's 2018 wastewater comprehensive plan. Uh, the request is related to this series of parcels in Magenta. Um, the proposed amendment is uh, related to this development called Mallards Landing Lot 7. It's a senior living facility right on the corner of Wagner Way and 72nd Street. Um, the parcels that make up Mallards Landing Lot 7 are currently located in basin 14. That is a little hard to see, but it is uh, this area to the south and to the north and to the, uh, of Mallards Landing Lot 7. Um, basin 14 pumps directly into basin three. And it, it currently discharges up here at the north end at the top of your screen uh, in Scansy Avenue near Elastera Lane. That's basin three. There's a gravity sewer manhole that it pumps into. Uh, the amendment that is proposed by Rush Development Company would redirect flows from lift station 14 into basin 21. Um, and it would discharge from the force main either into a gravity sewer manhole just inside the plat-, the north end at the top of the hill or down further on 72nd. Uh, both proposals have been made and we need to fine tune where that exact best location would be. Um, but essentially it takes sewer from basin 14 and instead of going directly into basin three, it discharges into basin 21. Uh, basin 21 has a lift stations uh, just to the south. Come on the screen. Um, down here at the very south end of, near the intersection of Hunt and Scansy. Uh, that lift station would receive the flows if this amendment is approved. And then it would turn around and pump those flows up into that same manhole uh, right up here that uh, basin 14 currently pumps into. It seems circuitous, but uh, there's definitely some reasoning to this. Um, this proposed amendment would reduce an existing capacity problem that we have at lift station 14. Um, and it would also eliminate the, the use of parallel force mains. So right now in the section of Scansy Avenue between 72nd and that manhole, there's two force mains in the roadway. By doing this, it would eliminate one of those parallel force mains. It takes up room and real estate in our right of way. Um, and it extends the amount of distance that we are, have pressurized sewer, which could be a failure point uh, in the future. So based on those benefits, staff supports this amendment. Uh, this topic was discussed at the city council study session on May 14th. And uh, section 1.4.2 of the wastewater comprehensive plan requires that these types of amendments be adopted by resolution. Therefore, we have before you tonight a resolution supporting that amendment. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for that report. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Director Langham. Just one question. If we go ahead and approve this, would you, do you see your staff see any long-term maintenance, extra long-term maintenance costs or maybe a reduction in long-term maintenance costs for the city?
Uh, we see some, we don't see additional maintenance costs. Uh, lift station 21 at the very south end is made to flow uh, at much higher flows than it receives now. It's uh, and, and there, there's a benefit to running that lift station more often than as late, little it's run right now.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin.
Hi, so do we know, and this may be directed more at the planning director, what the potential is for adding additional needs for the sewer? And would there be any issues that you foresee by making this change? That makes sense. So if there was a growth opportunity in basin 14, you said it's already at somewhat capacity. If we switch that over to 21, is there a capacity still beyond that then for basin 21?
Yes, uh, we had our consultant model this proposal as outlined. And if all of the sewer from basin 14 flows into basin 21 and basin 21 becomes fully developed, there is adequate capacity, as it says today.
Great, thank you. Um, I don't see any other questions from council. So I will open up public comment on this agenda item. If you are in the audience and wish to speak, you can come forward at this time. And if you're online and would uh, like to speak, you can push star nine on your phone or the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom window. Okay, seeing no public comment, I will close the public comment period and open it up for council deliberation. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. Uh, I move to approve resolution 1281 for the proposed wastewater comp plan technical amendment regarding basin number 21 and 14.
Second. Okay, you have a motion and a second. Seeing no other lights, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes six-zero. Thank you, council. Um, I'm sorry, can you um?
Could we take a five-minute break, please?
Certainly. Um, it is 6:34. We will take a quick break and reconvene at 6:40. Welcome back to the Gig Harbor City Council meeting of Monday, June 26th. The time is 6:43 PM. We have returned from break and we are going into our third business item, which is the agreement with Fish Food Bank for human services grant. And the suggested motion is moved to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Fish Food Bank for a human services grant in an amount not to exceed $50,000. And this report comes to us from our Public Works Director, Jeff Langham.
Thank you, Mayor. As you saw on the agenda bill for tonight, uh, the city does recognize the importance of keeping residents in their homes and connected to water and sewer utilities. This provides uh, a safe environment and a healthy environment. Um, we also recognize that the COVID-19 pandemic disproportionately impacted low or limited income residents and that shutting off their water and/or sewer utilities would jeopardize their current living conditions. So based on discussions we've had with council that have evolved throughout the past six months or so, uh, the city has reached out to Fish Food Bank and talked with them about partnering to uh, be able to make payments to uh, city water and sewer utility customers and have uh, some of those payments reimbursed by the city through a human services grant. Uh, this would help to minimize the number of residents that uh, would not have their water and sewer utilities paid for and thus minimize the impact to their safety and health. In June of 2023, when we started talking about the COVID-19 deferral uh, and payment program, the city had about 275 customers uh, that owed the city over 100, or about $150,000. Uh, as of today, spoke with Eli and Utility Billing, and he said that most customers have paid off their delinquent bills. Um, we have sent out flyers to notify people about our COVID-19 uh, payment program. And we have 19 customers now out of the 275 that have, uh, that are on the payment plan and only 15 customers that have not responded to the city's request or paid off their bill. So uh, the total amount of all the customers combined that either are on payment plans or have not responded is in the $50,000 range. And not all of the people that are in that lump of people uh, would be needing to take the financial aid from Fish Food Bank. So that's where we came up with that $50,000 number. So um, by adopting this agreement, uh, we can move forward and let fish go through their normal processes, providing financial aid. The city can review those requests for reimbursement and then pay whichever requests we think are appropriate. Um, because right now we're scheduled to start shut-offs in July. That is aside from uh, the recently passed state law that becomes effective July 23rd of this year that doesn't allow shut-offs during heat advisories. So that's my report. Happy to answer any questions you might have on the screen.
Great, thank you so much. Um, any questions from council? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I will open public comment on this agenda item only. If you're in the audience this evening in person or on uh, the computer online watching, you can push uh, star nine on your phone to speak or the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment on this item and open it up for council deliberation. Councilmember Lichten.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to let you know that I very much support this. I'm really happy to see this city doing this, that running water and sewer are basic, you know, health and safety. And that I believe as a city, you know, how we care for our most vulnerable is really our measure of our greatness. So I really appreciate this and I'm happy to support it. And I therefore move to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Fish Food Bank for a human services grant in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Barber. Uh, and Councilmember Barber.
I wanted to add to what.
None. Thank you. I was just going to think. I don't think it's.
I just wanted to add to what Councilmember Lichten said. One of the things that I really like about what the solution is that we came to on this project is that we also are working with a community partner who is known to those vulnerable people in our community as a provider of these services. So it's a really great way for us to be reaching out and working with the members of our community and using their expertises and bringing up to a great degree staff to do the work that they are doing. So I applaud you for this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wook?
Yes, thank you. Uh, this is also something that's easy to support. It's good for our community. It's good for those folks in need and it's wonderful to have Fish Food Bank as a partner. I also want to thank Eli and the utility billing folks. This is not an easy job that they do. And when you look at the dollar amounts that was owed to the city and the amount that they were able to kindly bring in and get everybody up to speed again, what a great job they have done. So it's it's nice that we have a staff here that does this with, I'm sure, great kindness. And it's wonderful to have a partner and and I'm glad that we have the money to do this with. So I look forward to supporting this.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, when you ask for attendees to raise their hand, they're not up there. So can you see them if they're not up there?
That's them right there, the four.
Those are panelists, right?
No, those are the attendees. Mm hmm. Yes, I did not see.
Then I just wanted to say to Jeff and his, I'm sorry, Director Langham and his reports that negotiating this so that it's a difficult thing to take public funds and funnel it through a charitable organization and cover all the bases legally. So I'm sure Daniel had a lot to play in this. So that it was a complicated negotiation and congratulations on getting it done. I think it's a terrific thing.
Thank you. I agree with all that's been said. I don't see any other lights on except Councilmember Rodenberg, so I think maybe. So I will, is there, we have a motion, we have a second. So I will ask for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes six zero. Thank you so much, council. All right, moving on to item number four is amendment number one to the professional services contract with Peninsula Financial Consulting for the utility rate study. Suggested motion is to move to authorize the mayor to sign amendment number one to the professional services contract with Peninsula Financial Consulting for utility rate analysis in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand three hundred dollars. And this report also comes to us from our Public Works Director Jeff Langham.
Thanks again, Mayor. As you know, the city is in the midst of a utility rate study with Peninsula Financial Consulting. The rate study is going to review existing rates. It also is going to review and compare those existing rates to future expenditures for all three city utilities, water, sewer, and storm. The rate study was intended to provide council with information to see if and when any rate adjustments would be necessary. We're looking out a total of about six years, so starting in two thousand and twenty four. The proposed amendment you have before you tonight would change the city's monthly, would allow for the consultant to change their approach to how water is collected, water rates are collected. Right now, we have a single consumption rate per hundred cubic feet. And this amendment would allow the consultant to analyze what it would look like if we changed it to three different tiered rate systems based off three different tiers of consumption. There are many reasons to implement tiered water rates. These include to encourage conservation, to reduce impacts on the city's aquifer, and also to recoup higher costs that the city encounters when we have high summer flows and constant running systems during the peak demand periods. Most of our water purveyors in our region already have tiered water rate structures. Some of them have two tiers, some of them have three, some of them even have four. So we're looking to present to council, if approved, if this amendment is approved, a three tiered water rate structure. The initial proposal from Peninsula Financial Consulting was to limit the tiered rate structure to residential customers. But at our July twentieth study session on this topic of utility rates, we can discuss applying these rates to commercial. But right now, the amendment that you have before you says that Ashley Emery of Peninsula Financial is only recommending that this be applied to residential. We can have that discussion with Ashley when he is here on the twentieth, though. If this amendment is approved tonight, I will also be proceeding with some requested staff training associated with tiered water rates data needs. Because our utility billing staff, if we go through tiered water rates, is going to have to provide Peninsula Financial Consulting with quite a bit of data out of Springbrook, which will take some creative report writing, which we need to train staff on how to do that. So that's what we would be doing if approved tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you so much. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Langham. I applaud us starting to move towards conservation of waters. Think all of us know that we're all of our water comes from aquifers, which are not an infinite resource. And with our changing climate, I just looked up the monthly precipitation for two thousand and twenty three, and it looks like we're already six inches behind and the year's not going to get any wetter. So as we start getting to be a drier climate, our aquifers are going to start shrinking. And so this is an excellent start to doing that. I would encourage us to look at the commercial use as well, especially for landscape irrigation. Talked many times with some of the city staff that are out there flushing water mains and asked them about, hey, what do you see during the summer? And the pumps are running a lot and the wells are dropping quite a bit. And that's probably mostly from watering lawns. So large commercial and commercial residential as well, they may need to be part of this as well. I would hate to be a residential property owner and trying to cut back when I see the multifamily place next to me running their sprinklers during a a rainstorm. So anyway, if you could kind of think about that, that would be great because I think it's time to start looking at conserving our resources for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wook.
Thank you. This is a great thing. And conservation is where it is and what we need to have for our city. How are we going to reach out to our users, to our rate payers? And I, for one, pay, I have an automatic payment, and so I don't get anything in the mail. So how are we going to reach our citizens?
Well, that's something we're going to talk about also on July twentieth, about how we're going to reach out to our residents about all of our utility rate amendments and adjustments that might be coming down the pipe. In options, we're going to have, we'd be able to reach out in many ways. Social media, likely direct mailings. But also, we're going to have at least one or maybe two either open houses or public meetings. We did this last time when we adjusted rates in two thousand and fifteen or two thousand and fourteen. So we are planning on doing that again.
So thank you. That was, I was around for those. So I was on council, but I did come and attend. And that was a really good and easy way to understand the presentation. So hopefully, we can get more citizens to attend these. And surely, I'm sure they will when they look at their bills in the summertime if they're not conserving. So yeah, it's important to let them know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodenberg.
This is question for Director Langham. Does it cost anymore to deliver a cubic foot of water to someone that's choosing a hundred cubic feet opposed to someone that's using two hundred cubic foot? Is the cost to deliver the water the same?
We if you're just looking at one person, no, it's inconsequential. But if everybody used one hundred cubic feet of water versus two hundred cubic feet of water, definitely. We have to provide all of our facilities that can handle that increase in flow, whether that's wells that are active, redundant wells, and then our stand pipes or our reservoirs or tanks. And so it does cost us quite a bit more money to be able to have the facilities to provide.
It's not the cost of the water, it's just the cost to deliver.
The the
Roll up cost.
The roll up cost, the only, the only direct cost would be the size of the pumps. Because if we only had to deliver half as much water, the pumps could be smaller. And the electricity that's used to pull the water out of the aquifer, put in the system.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barber.
Yes, thank you. My question is with relation to the commercial, including commercial in this. Did I understand correctly that if we wanted to include a commercial tier in this rate study that you would need to come back to us with another amendment? Or can we talk about it at the study session, agree that we want to have that included and then it gets included? Or I'm trying to figure out if there's a way to facilitate that change.
I'm going to have to let Ashley answer that when he's before you.
Okay.
It, what it likely depends on is if we're going to have to look at data and have rates set differently for commercial than rates set for consumption rates, not base rates, consumption rates set differently for commercial versus residential.
Okay, I'd be very interested in hearing what he has to say on that. I think we should include both.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Martin.
So just to tag on to that question, how is the rate for commercial set right now? Is it identical to residential? Or is it, is it different right now?
I need to check the consumption rate. I believe it's, the base rate is definitely different, so I will be checking on it momentarily.
Okay, and then when we go forward with potentially increasing the rates for our utilities, often there's times where we can recommend to people things that they can do to reduce their use or their consumption, as you're saying, of whether it's water or electricity, whatever. Do we plan to have a small campaign on something like that to suggest how they can reduce things? So we're not just shifting the consumption from, say, eight to five weekdays to ten to midnight on weekdays. Does that make sense? So the consumption would be the same. I don't know. Are you looking at this for a demand thing? So it's an hourly thing or it's truly consumption? So if I use a hundred right now and I go to fifty, I'm going to have a different rate if I go to fifty?
Correct, because our meters are not set up to calculate how much water is used during different times of the day.
Okay.
That would take another revision to have different meters installed.
Thank you.
And I just looked at our code because all of this is in code. And yes, there are three different rate structures between residential, multi-residential, and commercial on the consumption side. So right now, residential is the highest rate per hundred cubic feet. Multi-residential is the lowest and commercial and schools is right in between. And this is effective January first, two thousand and twenty three. The rates are, and this is commodity charge, consumption charge per hundred cubic feet. Residential is two dollars seventy seven cents. Multi-residential is two dollars fifty nine cents and commercial is two dollars sixty nine cents.
Okay, great. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. Actually, I have a couple of questions, one to Director Langham and then one to our Director DeCemus. Director Langham, do our meters allow a resident to kind of check on their water usage online, kind of like Ken Light does with the My Meter app? You can actually look and see almost to your daily usage, which when I'm getting back to Councilmember Wook's comment about how do we let people know? The way to change things is if somebody can go in there and say, oh, my gosh, I used like three hundred cubic feet of water the other day, I better check my sprinkler system versus getting the bill after two months like we normally do and saying, great Scott, look at that bill. What do I do now? So it's kind of late. So do our water meters allow that kind of a ability to check on usage?
They don't. The technology is definitely out there. When we proposed a water meter retrofit program that we started back in two thousand and seventeen or two thousand and eighteen as part of the budget, we provided council with a few options. The one you're describing was included, it's the most expensive, and that was not the one that was selected.
Okay, good. Thank you. Director DeCemus, is what conservation going to be anywhere in our comprehensive plan update?
If it's, I'd have to look at the climate action plan to see if there was any, if there was any mention of water conservation in that plan. I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can certainly look into it and and get back to you. But I, I don't see it being an issue to include it in the, in the comp plan.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I know that's been one of my questions as well as, you know, how do we let the public know of these changes? I know probably notifying HOA presidents and getting them to send that out, you know, directly might be a good way. But also, you know, they may have to alter their letter schedule, you know, for nasty grams that they give to homeowners. Hey, your lawn's brown, you need to water it or you're going to be fined. If they know that there's a consumption plan in place, they might have to modify that. So I've had a couple of questions from HOAs, like, okay, if you guys change anything related to water or stormwater, you know, let us know so that we know if we have to give people letters or if we need to put that on a two month schedule versus an every month schedule, things like that. So I don't know if that's something that we, I know the HOA fair is still something I really, really, really want to do. But again, it's time and, you know, when can we get that done? But I think that will be really helpful if we can have an HOA fair and start having more of those larger kind of events to let HOA presidents and boards know what what's going on and what to notify the residents of. Might help spread the word faster. So thank you for your great work on this. Yes, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Jeff hadn't, has not mentioned this yet, but he is working, his department's working on our first ever drought policy. So as we're going into years with less, less and less rain, that's been a long day. Anyway, where we're not getting as much rain as we used to receive, we're coming up with a drought policy so that we can notify residents of that. Of course, that will go through council, but it's something that we're looking at in terms of water consumption in the summer time. So that'll be forthcoming.
Yes, thank you so much for that. Okay, I will open up public comment on this agenda item. If you're in the audience in person or if you're watching online, you can press star nine on your phone or the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Okay, seeing no public comment, I will close public comment on this item and open it up for council deliberation. Councilmember Martin.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign amendment number one to the professional services contract with Peninsula Financial Consulting for utility rate analysis in the amount not to exceed twelve thousand three hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay. I see no other lights. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes six zero. Thank you, council. Moving on to our final item of the evening is first reading and adoption of ordinance fifteen fourteen relating to the city's criminal code, amending section nine point two six point zero seven zero of the Gig Harbor Municipal Code to adopt by reference R C W seven dot one oh five relating to protection orders. Suggested motion is to move to approve ordinance fifteen fourteen. And this report comes to us from our Lieutenant Fred Douglas. Thank you so much for being here.
You bet. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight before you is a simple administrative action that will maintain the ability to prosecute misdemeanor protective order violations through the Gig Harbor Municipal Court. Protection order violations used to be prosecuted through the Gig Harbor Municipal Court under R C W ten dot fourteen. That R C W was repealed by the state legislature in two thousand and twenty one and an updated law concerning protection order violations was recodified under R C W seven point one zero five. To be enforceable through the Gig Harbor Municipal Court, reference to the pre-existing state law should be removed and the updated state statute must be adopted by this, by the city by way of this ordinance. You will note that there were many more statutes previously adopted under R C W ten point fourteen. But after consulting with the city prosecutor, most of those were not needed when the laws were recodified under R C W seven point one zero five. Only the laws required to prosecute the misdemeanor violations of protection orders are included in the ordinance. Only the laws required to prosecute the misdemeanor violations of protection orders are included in the ordinance. The suggested, suggested motion is to approve ordinance one five one four on first reading. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any clarifying questions from council on this item? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I will open up public comment on this agenda item only. If you're in the audience, you can come forward. If you're online, you can press star nine on your phone or the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and open it up for council deliberation. Councilmember Wook.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance number fifteen fourteen.
Aye, second.
Okay. Seeing no other lights. The motion is to approve ordinance fifteen fourteen. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes six zero. Thank you, council. Okay, we will move on to council reports and comments. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to report on the whisper, the West Sound Partners for Ecosystem Recovery Meeting that I had on Friday. We had an executive meeting and it was held here in the city. And the reason for that was that we could later go on a field trip to visit our Twala Conservation Area. So we even had the mayor of Bremerton here and he was very impressed with what we've done. People were just completely amazed at what we had done so fast, it seemed like so fast. And that we had actually conserved so much property. And also County Councilmember Denson was there too to help give us some additional background on what happened. And then we also talked about the potential acquisition of some more property. So the, the meeting went really well. I was quite pleased about that. We weren't on the twenty twenty three funding summary this time. They decided to fund, which wasn't very much money, one of the other projects. So there is some stuff coming up and I'll be working with the staff on that to make sure that we're getting in line for some grants. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lichten.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On June fifteenth, I attended the Pierce County Regional Council meeting. And in that meeting, we heard an update on climate change from Dr. Ellie Klaus McGann from Climate Pierce County. It was very informative. We also had a presentation by Tiffany Spear from the Growth Management CC Vice Chair from Lakewood on the comprehensive plan update schedule. And there's a couple of slides that I'm going to send out to all of mayor and council that were super informative. Went over the process of the comprehensive plan and how it works with the Growth Management Act. There were some really good resources, including all kinds of series and sessions and workshops that you could watch. They're free, they're uploaded on Zoom. I'm going to send that information out. And we all know the goal of the growth management is to concentrate growth in the cities and prevent urban sprawl. But why is the Growth Management Act and why is it important for us to be in it as a part of our comprehensive plan? Well, in order to get grants or loans from certain state infrastructure programs, you need to be in agreement with the Growth Management Act. And they really were emphasizing that in the discussion. There are a couple of new areas in this most recent Growth Management Act and comprehensive plan updates. Two areas have been added. We all know about climate change and resiliency and the other are the shorelines of the state. So those are two new areas that will be in this current cycle for twenty twenty four. And like I said, I'm happy to send this information around to everyone. We also heard a presentation from the very excellent presenter Jason Gauthier, who I know came to our study session as well. He talked about the House Bill eleven ten, the zoning update that doesn't apply to Gig Harbor because we are not adjoining to the Pierce County. But he believes, and he spoke quite a bit about the fact that he feels this may be coming. So we need to just keep the conversation going. I will also share his presentation if anybody's interested in looking at it. And then I just wanted to say I attended the Pride and the Park Gig Harbor presentation along with many of my council members. It was a very joyous, inclusive event. The feedback from the community, I received several emails with things like, thank you, thank you. I've never been seen before. I felt welcomed. The feedback was overwhelmingly positive. And I just was really proud of that group for putting that together. Well, that's it.
Thank you so much. I don't see any other lights on, so except yours. Announcement of upcoming meetings is attached to this agenda as well as the new department update attachment. So feel free to read through those to learn about the inside scoop of what we're all doing across every department in the city. And if there is nothing else for the good of the order, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.